All right, we're gonna begin the open mic session of the evening. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express views on matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage lengthy debate or exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people's time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in Olympia Public Schools District. And having discussed their views with a student government representative, the chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at any school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. Do have some folks signed up. And the first person is Sheila O'Neil. If you could state your name and address, please.
There's no mic.
Oh.
No mic if you open my chat.
We can hear you, Sheila.
I'm quite sure you can hear me.
Whoa, unplugged mic. You get it? There you go. Mic check, mic check.
All right, thank you. Good evening, my name is Sheila O'Neil. Part of the maintenance crew. I'm the president of the Lynn Teachers Union and I live at 200 Locust Street in Lynn. I would like to acknowledge the educators of Lynn Public Schools during this week of teacher appreciation.
Yes.
Unfortunately, many of our educators are feeling less than respected and valued due to the untimely decisions regarding the structure for next school year. The decision to eliminate positions after the postings for school year twenty-five, twenty-six had already started has caused dissension and distrust among our members for leadership. Members were kept waiting for over five weeks to be notified officially of position closings. Meanwhile, rumors were rolling across the city and educators were looking for answers. Although the union has been informed about the reasons for the delay, it does not erase the stress and lack of communication educators have endured for the past six weeks. At this point, the postings and awarding of positions for next school year will not be complete until sometime in June. This delay limits the district's ability to recruit newly graduated educators looking for jobs. In the future, we hope the district will be more transparent and communicate potential changes prior to postings so all members have the ability to make informed decisions about their careers. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Jeffrey Marshall. Say your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Marshall. I'm faculty of visual art at North Shore Community College. And since 2022, I've worked with the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. That's one of my students who's about to kill it in her presentation tomorrow. I'm not here as a representative of NSCC or FDCA, but simply as a concerned educator who works with Lynn Public School students. I've been a teacher for twenty years in higher education, additional ten years in K through twelve, and I say this only to let you know that I'm coming from a place of experience. And now, before I start my complaining part of the thing, I just want to thank you for the work that you do. You make difficult decisions that are often unpopular, and it's these decisions I'd like to talk to you about tonight. Two decisions I'd like to thank you for, one of which was to open the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. It's an excellent school with excellent students. That's a ninth grader. And the other thing I'd like to thank you for was appointing Heather Fabiano as the principal. I've worked with a lot of principals. Heather Fabiano is an excellent principal, and we are very thankful to have her. But there have been mistakes. The first mistake that directly affected me in the classroom was the elimination of the co-teacher position last year. My co-teacher was Dylan McDougall, who was an excellent young teacher. He's gonna be an award-winning teacher in the future, and I should know. I've seen a lot of them, but he is not gonna be an award-winning teacher with the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. And this year, or this week, I should say, I heard about the reduction in staff for my support staff. Two excellent compassionate educators who will no longer be helping me in the classroom and supporting my students, one of whom is a Lynn Public School graduate and early college graduate. But unfortunately, they will no longer be excellent compassionate teachers in the Lynn Public Schools. This makes me wonder if you're getting all the information that you need to make these cuts. I have not seen anyone besides Jennifer in my classroom to see what we do. I haven't had an email that says, what is the effect of these cuts gonna be on your students and in your classroom? And maybe that's on me. I invite you all to please come to my classroom in the fall and see what we do. We do college-level excellent work in the classroom, but we need our support. I worry that this is gonna lead to the dismantling of the FDCA or the crippling of its mission, which would be a true disappointment. It's an excellent school. I love being there. I acknowledge that there's a lot of things that I don't have access to. I don't have access to budget and other things, but I do know that you've been asking us to do more with less, and I hope you will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Valentina Rodriguez.
Hi, my name is Valentina. I'm a student from Brickett, and I'm gonna be a student next year in Casa. I'm really excited about it, cuz I know that this new school is gonna help me a lot in my, like, in my studies. And also, it's gonna help me to things that I like, like music, arts, and sports. I think this is gonna help me, cuz something that I really like to do is like play violin and do drawings. So this is in science and math. I really like math because it's something that I'm really good at it. Sometimes I frustrate, but it's okay, I keep trying. But I think this is gonna help a lot, a lot of kids, like me and other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Pull the mic. Speak into it.
Hi, my name is Kiara, and I'm really excited to go to Casa, because I heard that there's really good things about it, like technology. And I really love, like Valentina said, I really love math and arts and technology that there's gonna be there, and I'm really excited to be there with any other student and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you both so much. Thank you. Great. Anyone else for open mic? Anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Yep. Say your name and address.
My name is Nourim Duff Connolly. I live at Ten Ryan's Terrace in Lynn, and I love the city of Lynn. I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Regiro and to Ms. Cohen for the beautiful letter that you sent to all of the educators respecting us and just letting us know that you understand where we are, and I know you've been there. Thank you. This is way outside my comfort zone, but I'm doing this because I feel like it's important enough that each of you look at me and realize I have dedicated eight years of my life to education in Lynn, and it has been the most incredible, amazing experience that a person could wish for. Before that, I was a podiatrist, so I was a person who went to college as a chemistry major. I took math right through, calculus too. And I was a doctor until I realized my children really needed me at home. So that's what I decided to do. I came into the profession of teaching when my children were in early elementary school. I started as a substitute teacher in the city of Lynn, and I love being a teacher in Lynn. But after seven years of being an elementary math intervention teacher, I was very kindly told by my principal, Ms. Nikosia, that my position was closed this year. At the end of the year, I'll no longer have that position. I just want to let everybody know, I've been really enjoying the class that I've been taking, the math recovery class. I've spent many hours this year doing outside of the actual hours for the class with that because I love it. It's like a hobby, a vocation. I really love it. I just wanna let each of you know, looking at me, I'm not going anywhere. I'll take whatever job you want to give me next year, but I feel very sad the way that a lot of people were informed that their position was closed. It's hurtful to just know that you're giving everything you can to your position and enjoying it. It's very purpose-filled. I feel like I've just been told that I have to leave my home at the Tracy School. I go to the park for a park cleanup, and I see children from the Tracy School, and they're all excited to see Mrs. Connolly. I'm not gonna be there next year, and I don't even have the heart to tell the poor kids. Maybe it sounds too big or grandiose of me, but I just want you to know, I'm a person, and when you're making the decisions that you're making, think of how you inform the people that you're telling that they no longer have a position. And this whole process of having to wait to find out, it just really feels hurtful. So thank you for listening to me, and peace.
Thank you, Ms. Connolly.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Last call for open mic. We will close the open mic portion of the meeting and move into the ninth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Pena?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadowite?
Present.
Nicholson?
Present.
We also have Jennifer Rodriguez Lopez here. Welcome, Jennifer, from the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. Our student representative this evening, Jennifer Rodriguez Lopez, attends Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy, Lynn Public Schools Early College Dual Enrollment High School. This means that Jennifer is already earning college credit as she ends her ninth grade year. She'll have completed three courses and have nine credits to use towards an associate's degree at North Shore Community College and/or transfer to a four-year college or university. Jennifer is a high-achieving student who consistently demonstrates a strong commitment to her academic work and is consistently at the top of her class, earning all As and is currently positioned at number six of her freshman class. Outside of school, Jennifer is very involved in her church, volunteering as an assistant in the children's classroom and as an active participant in the church's youth group program. Jennifer is an exemplary student who not only is not only academically gifted, but also a role model in terms of responsibility and character. FDCA is very proud to have her as our representative and one of our scholars. Welcome. All right, if you're able, please join me in a salute to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the seventh regular meeting on April tenth, 2025.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just have it. Next, we have appointments.
Good evening. We have three school nurse elections this evening. Nilsa Martinez, Deanna McMahon, and Laura Kavanaugh, appointed as school nurses.
So roll the committee.
Second. Still move.
Let's make a motion. Okay, I think we gotta name them.
Yeah.
Wanna do one at a time?
Yeah, we can do one at a time.
The first school nurse election is Nilsa Martinez.
Okay, make motion to elect Nilsa Martinez, Lynn Public School Nurse.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Nilsa Martinez.
Member Dugan?
Nilsa Martinez.
Member Gailey?
Nilsa Martinez.
Member Pena?
Nilsa Martinez.
Member Reed?
Nilsa Martinez.
Member Sadowite?
Nilsa Martinez.
Mayor Nicholson?
Nilsa Martinez. All right, and then next motion?
Make a motion to elect Deanna McMahon as a school nurse.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Deanna McMahon.
Member Dugan?
Deanna McMahon.
Member Gailey?
Deanna McMahon.
Member Reed?
Deanna McMahon.
Member Pena?
Deanna McMahon.
Member Sadowite?
Deanna McMahon.
Mayor Nicholson?
Deanna McMahon.
Make a motion to elect Laura Kavanaugh as a school nurse.
Second.
Second.
Member Castellanos?
Laura Kavanaugh.
Member Dugan?
Laura Kavanaugh.
Member Gailey?
Laura Kavanaugh.
Member Pena?
Laura Kavanaugh.
Member Reed?
Laura Kavanaugh.
Member Sadowite?
Laura Kavanaugh.
Mayor Nicholson?
Laura Kavanaugh. All right, next, we have certificates to our student, school committee participants. The, we've had, we have four participants this year, three of whom are seniors, and so they weren't able to be here tonight, but we will get them these certificates.
They're here.
Oh, they are here?
They're here.
Okay.
They couldn't be able to come on the twenty-ninth.
They couldn't come on the twenty-ninth?
Well, that's why we're recognizing Jennifer.
That's why we're recognizing tonight.
Amen.
Clearly, all right, so.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, that's terrific. That's much better news. Great, so we have with us this evening all four student representatives in the school committee from the different high schools, and we have these certificates that are signed by each of the school committee, and we have the utmost gratitude and appreciation for your service this year, and so appreciate your ability to bring in the student voice to the governance of our district. I will just mention here some of where these students are headed, because it's very exciting. Keila Chajin?
Chahon.
Chahon. From Lynn Vocational Technical Institute, won a Posse Scholarship to Bucknell University. And even better, she plans to study elementary education.
Bring it back, bring it back.
Amazing, congratulations. And then Valeria Mendez, who's at Lynn English, will be attending Harvard University. And majoring in government. Finally, for the seniors, Amanda Hughes from Lynn Classical will be attending Brynmar, majoring in biology. Amazing, so we have this certificate, and in a minute, we'll call everyone up and we can take a picture, but I wanna let you know what it says. The Lynn School Committee hereby extends with great pride and appreciation. It's the most sincere. Congratulations to Keila Chahon, Valeria Mendez, Amanda Hughes, and Jennifer Rodriguez Lopez. In recognition of your participation as a student representative for the Lynn School Committee for the 2024-2025 school year, the mayor and members of the school committee are honored to recognize your outstanding accomplishment and respectfully offer our warmest wishes and encouragement for continued success in the future. Congratulations. We'll do one by one, and then get a group photo.
Absolutely.
Dr. Alves, you wanna join us? All right, so first, let's recognize.
Thank you.
Keila Chahon.
Thank you so much.
Next, Valeria Mendez. Amanda Hughes. Thank you. All right, congratulations again. Next, we have a curriculum adoption update. Hammy Cox and Kristen Tabacco.
Good evening. My name's Kristen Tabacco. I'm the Assistant Director of Curriculum for History and Social Studies, pre-K to twelve. I'm delighted to be back here. I know you just saw me in December, but I am back again already. I wanna start by thanking all of the teachers and principals and instructional leaders in the buildings for all of the work they've done on social studies, and elementary especially and middle school. So I'm gonna be sharing a lot of information relatively quickly, so, you know, you can take notes and prepare for the quiz. I wanted to start with a couple reminders that we are committed to providing the highest quality culturally responsive materials, especially for civic and social studies education. And the materials that I've already shared with you, we will be moving forward with. And just as a reminder, curate and ed reports has not yet begun to review social studies materials still in K to twelve, K to eight, I mean, I'm sorry. And so I'll be sharing with you some of the ways that we determine what is high-quality instruction based on our experts here. Some of the, some of the parameters include the inquiry-based instruction, cultural responsiveness, standards-based units, design and assessment, high-quality and diverse sources, and robust professional development. So with social studies in K to two, when I began this role in school year twenty-two, twenty-three, we identified the need for high-quality instructional materials to be present in these grade levels. The next year, I focused on providing some links and resources to open source and materials that we already have via our SharePoint. And then this year, we were lucky enough to be able to get the civics grant again, which enabled us to do a children discovering justice teacher leader cohort with thirteen of our K to two teachers across the district. And we've had an excellent success with that pilot. As you can see on the screen, there are classrooms at Cobbett, and I believe Druck's up there, or maybe. These teachers have done amazing work in bringing our children the foundational knowledge skills and dispositions that they need to succeed in, in our increasingly complex society. As we approach school year twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll be sharing children discovering justice as a core resource for K to two and doing a district-wide pilot of these materials. Part of those PD plans include after-school PD, PLC activities, and professional development provided by curriculum office, and hopefully some summer workshops. And I do anticipate that we get the civics grant again, which would enable us to do another teacher leader cohort, and that would hopefully put us at two teachers per elementary school as fully trained civic, so civic and social studies leaders, which will help with implementation in the schools. Wanted to share next with you some of the support that we've received from teachers in the pilot. One hundred percent of the survey respondents in that survey agree or strongly agree that CDJ should be a core resource for our K to two. Actually, I'm gonna share one quote there, cuz I have a lot. It's hard to pick. One teacher said, "My class truly enjoyed CDJ. We learned a lot about advocacy and responsibility. I'd love to have more time each week to devote to civics." And you can see in the other quote there as well, she talks about the students being really engaged and that the materials were easy to carry out and understand in the, in the setup process online. Social studies for grade three to four, this was honestly one of the most exciting and rewarding experiences this year for me. Going back to, again, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we identified the need for high-quality instructional materials in this area, especially where, as you know, grade three is Massachusetts, Massachusetts is my home standards, and then grade four is geography of North America, which really centers students in their, our place in the world and sets them up for success in social studies later on, the skills that they'll need. Last year, we ran an adoption committee, as I have shared with you. Nothing really fit the bill for that grade span that was going to meet any of our standards, most importantly, hearing from diverse sources in all of these curriculums. We were not seeing that. But then, the investigating history pilot opportunity came up in about the end of May, I think, last year, and we jumped on that, thanks to the principals for volunteering their schools to participate in that, and we got thirty-nine teachers that had been engaged in six full days of PD across the summer and school year to do that pilot. It's not just our pilot, it is Desi's pilot of the curriculum to create and streamline it for publication. This year, sorry, this upcoming year, we will, we really felt confident in piloting it throughout the entire district with a partner PD provider and some of our in-house teachers who have already learned this curriculum this year. I'm gonna share more about the professional development in just a second, but there, I just wanted to say that with investigating history, there's a ton of support from the state and organizations like One Eight Foundation that strictly support DKP, IH, and DKP, all of which I'll talk about later tonight. So on to the next slide. Oh, teacher support, so I'll talk about PD in just a second. I just wanted to share here that of the student, the teachers that piloted, the thirty-nine teachers, a hundred percent of them strongly agreed or agreed. None of them disagreed with the, with these statements here. You can read a couple of them, but I wanted to highlight, one of the things that they, that they agreed with was that this program provides daily or almost daily opportunities for students writing. Students are writing every day in this program. I hear that consistently from teachers. Oh, I have a couple more quotes, but I won't say them all. I will share, "It was exciting to have students so engaged and enjoying learning about history." Oh, and students are truly. are truly history detectives, which reminds me to thank the Lynn Museum for our second successful year of Lynn Museum History Detectives for all 1,300 3rd graders. And now the PD. I want to share Kami Cox and myself and our teams have paid close attention to the 3 and 4 and 5 especially with the science adoption that you'll hear about, and are thoughtfully planning PD as to not overwhelm teachers, but also to provide high-quality instructional materials as soon as possible to these important content areas. So we'll start out with science in September. Kami will share more about that, but they'll get their PD for that. They'll pilot the entire unit to apply that learning immediately and receive coaching along the way. After that, they'll receive the social studies PD, and then they'll get a chance to apply those skills immediately with the first social studies unit. And you'll notice too, at the top, many of the schools have already done IH, so it will really just be a new for half the schools. It'll be like a year two for social studies rather than a year one. Grade 5, we also piloted investigating history. As you'll recall, this grade level was fully published in the previous school year, so all of those materials were available. We had great results from the grade 5 pilot. And in surveying the teachers, they really support us moving forward with that, same as at grade 3 and 4. So next year will be really our first full year of formal adoption. PD plans for that include, again, after-school PD, PLC activities, and professional development provided by my office, and hopefully some summer workshops as well. And again, DESI is really ramping up to provide even more free opportunities for PD along with the registered PD partners. So we'll be looking out for those opportunities to make fiscally responsible decisions. And 83% of respondents in the survey for grade 5 agreed or strongly agreed that this program is beneficial for student learning in both content and literacy. That's reading, writing, listening, and speaking. One teacher said on the next page, oh, one teacher said, "I love teaching this curriculum." Oh, go back one, sorry. Yeah. Can you go back one more? Sorry. I can just say this part. That's okay. Just say that. Oh, there you go. Okay, sorry. So for grade 6 and 7, going back to when I began in this role, we had a resource of National Geographic. The second year that I was in this role, a great team remapped all of grades 6 and 7 in accordance with the 2018 standards. And we actually also ran in a successful investigating history pilot with the Health and the Civics Grant at the end of the year, which really galvanized us in moving forward to pilot it with the entire district this year, which we did with our partner PD provider, Local Civics. And we are excited to hear all the teacher support to adopt that as a core resource in 2526. And again, same PD plan as before on the bottom in green. And with teacher feedback, 89% of respondents agree or strongly agree, and again, 0% disagree or strongly disagree that they support the adoption of investigating history for a core curriculum for grades 6 and 7. And they also agreed that throughout the pilot year, "I felt supported by the district to experiment with the curricular resources, and I felt empowered to make them my own." I feel like that's really an important piece. And again, too many quotes to pull from, but I'll share with you the second one. There are a lot of opportunities for writing in the claim, evidence, reasoning format. That's what we do in social studies. Students improved at using evidence to support their claim. This is very hard to accomplish, so thank you, Investigating History, for doing that. Finally, grade 8 is the last one. We back in 2022, we had actively learn in McGraw-Hill program. Those programs did not fit the needs of our students. And so last year, we met with the entire grade 8 team and every single teacher in there. I think there was 26 of them. They all agreed they wanted to do the DKP pilot full-on this year in August, and so we did. And so with the results of that, we're going to have DKP be our core resource for grade 8. And again, the similar PD plan with summer workshops, again, potential opportunities with grants and from the state that support this type of project-based learning and applied learning programs at all levels here. And for grade 8, with the respondents of the survey, 84% agree or strongly disagree with the statement that the program was easy to use and provided great opportunities for our students to access the curriculum. These quotes are really awesome, but I will just kind of read a little bit of it. The first one says, oh, no, the second one I wanted to read. In the middle, it says, "It also introduced them to changemakers from diverse racial, ethnic, social, and economic backgrounds, helping them see a variety of experiences and inspiring them to make a difference." I don't know what the buzzing is. I'm sorry. In summary, here is our plan for K through 8 for next year. We have K to 2 with children discovering justice as a core resource, basically doing investigating history in some capacity in grades 3 through 7. And then we have the Democratic Knowledge Project as a core in grade 8. And the last thing I want to mention here is that all of these resources are really centered on the inquiry process. They are rich with project-based learning opportunities in almost every unit. And the digital materials are free to access right now for people. We're really excited, and thank you so much again to the teachers who helped make this happen and are so excited about teaching social studies and civics to our students. And the last one is professional development of grades 6 through 8. These teachers are really, really strong in this area, so we'll continue with a little bit of a light-touch PD for 6 and 7, since they're already fully trained. We'll use our school-based PLCs and lesson internalization and intellectual prep protocols to help strengthen their knowledge and then onboard any new teachers, of course, with my office hours. And grade 8 is a similar model. We also have a lot of leaders in these grades that would be happy to do a train-the-trainer model in the schools. And in all grade levels, I'll continue to support and offer coaching from my office with Social Study Sparks, which is something I started last year. And teachers can book that at any time in my SharePoint or email signature. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Tobacco. That was a very thorough presentation. I really liked the part about writing and, you know, just kind of the authentic writing that'll come from this, especially with the claim and evidence. That's a really important skill for kids, especially when we're talking, unfortunately, when we're talking about state testing, that is an important part of that as well. So that's a really exciting part of it that I like. You mentioned something at the end, the digital materials are free to access. Could you explain a little bit more about that?
Yeah, sure. So Children Discovering Justice is founded, is actually, I'm sorry, sponsored by a number of organizations. You can see on their website, private foundations like the Gates Foundation and things like that. I'd have to check exactly. But they will always be provided as free digital resources. So, yeah, that's.
Okay. So just for students to access or?
Teachers. Well, I mean, anyone can get on there. But teachers, really, it's all, they live on a Google Drive. And they were, once you get a very short training on it, it's really easy to understand. And they're open source. And there's no small cost for professional development, depending on how much you want to do. So, yeah, that's open source. Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, and the other ones too, sorry. Investigating History, sorry, was developed in partnership with DESI, I think Boston University, Educurious, Primary Source, a number of other partners. And those are going to continue to be open source curriculum, which is great. And DKP is also funded by 1-8 Foundation and a number of other universities and private organizations that enable that curriculum to be free.
Awesome. Thank you.
Questions? Yeah.
This is going to be implemented school year 2526?
Well, yes, depending on which grade level it is, there are various, like, there are various modes. So, but yeah, we will be doing, using all these programs as a core in next year or a pilot. Yep.
I have a question for the superintendent. Do we bring it before a subcommittee for a vote?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very good. I'm so sorry.
I asked the superintendent a question.
No, so we have, this has been part of the rollout that has been, that happened with HQIM. This has been pending for four years. And my understanding is that it was agreed that we would implement science and social studies. And because of lack of funds, it was not done the previous three years. The first year was ELA in math. The rollout was quite quick, and it placed a lot of professional development strain on teachers as well as the district. And so what I understood was that everything was agreed to in HQIM at that time. This is just that we are still trying to catch up in terms of funding the materials for science and social studies at this time for the grades that are pending. So students have not been using the HQIM in all grades, as DESI had indicated, I believe, four or five years ago when they came out with the initiative.
Usually, we vote on it as a subcommittee and then move it to the whole.
Yeah. When you say agreed to, do you mean it was approved already by the subcommittee?
Correct. What I understand is that the, and the school committee is, has to vote on the budget in terms of funding the amounts that are proposed for the purchases, which are very large for science and social studies.
So I think the question is, had this gone to a curriculum subcommittee in the past at some point?
I think I was at several school committee meetings and subcommittees.
I think that's right. Yeah.
I think it's been resolved. But just a point of clarity. So it sounds like 22, year 2223, this came before the curriculum subcommittee? We approved it? Okay.
Yeah, it was supposed to be rolled out.
And we just hadn't done it yet because of a lack of funding?
Correct.
So it must have been approved by the subcommittee.
That's what I understand, but.
Yeah, I'd like to also share that a lot of the things that we're talking about here, like grade 3 and 4, essential instructional years for social studies, they were not, they did not exist in 2223. They started, Investigating History started doing 5, 6, and 7, I think in 2021 or 22, and piloted it just like we're doing with 3 and 4, and then published them. So we're working with, IH has just been published fully. DKP, actually, last year, it was only, they came, it came out of Cambridge Public Schools, actually, and moved to the foundation. And this is like what's second, maybe our third year that that's even been out. So we're great, we're cutting edge, really, of this discipline, which is great.
I remember paying in.
Well, thank you for the presentation. And I just want to say, take your time to really appreciate all the educators, you know, Teachers Week, and really appreciate all the work you do for our students. I had a question. When will, where will this be reviewed? Is it ever sourced? Does the review?
Do you mean like an HQIM review? Do you mean Curate and Ed Reports?
Yes, yes.
So maybe someone else, Molly might be able to speak to this a little better than I can, but Curate, you know, curriculum readings by teachers, right? That organization has only chosen to review science, math, and ELA. And even science, they're just catching up, right? If I understand correctly. And Ed Reports also, they do not, they have not reviewed any social studies curriculum. Curate is doing the curriculum we have right now, Savvis, Semi World, Semi View, I'm sorry, Savvis U.S. History and World History Interactive. They are just starting that panel this year to review. And I am excited that they will probably approve it, and we already have it. So it's perfect. But, yeah, they did not do social studies, history, and so the History and Social Studies Department at DESI has their own review system. That I said in the beginning, the criteria for what they approve, and you can look on DESI's website now, it's very much in line, and I would say even better because of our discipline and the really rich cultural resources that you need to put in these curriculums. So it's really right in line with those. It just, they don't do it yet.
At this time, there's been no greenlit social studies or history curriculum by Curate or Ed Reports.
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
And out of curiosity, how many took the survey for K to 2? You said 100%. I just, what was the number?
So our K to 2 pilot teachers, there was 13. I think I might have got in 11 of them within the short term around the time that I had.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, again, I'm not questioning any of this, but just to make sure we're moving down the right track, I think I would recommend us making sure that we did do that. I don't doubt that we did. I'm sure we probably didn't. I was on that subcommittee, and I do recall, I think, somewhat, a history curriculum. But I want, just to make sure that we did do this right, and we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, I wouldn't, you know, encourage maybe someone to just, yeah, look that up and make sure that we did follow that road.
If there's no other questions, I'll see you on Civics Day on May 30th, Lynn Tech Fieldhouse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the City Arts and Sciences Academy facilities and opening updates.
I'm going to update about science.
Oh, sorry, science.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Is, is DKP going to be the sole, I'm sorry, the sole curriculum?
Sole, as in the only thing teachers are to use? No. Teachers in our program, they should, there's so many great resources out there all the time from a number of different organizations like Stanford. There's a lot of other resources out there, Mass Historical Society, the Smithsonian. So teachers are encouraged to use the vast resources that they have, so they can supplement with a number of other things.
Thank you. Sorry for asking.
All right. Good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm Kami Cox. I'm the Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Science, pre-K through 12. And so tonight, I'll be speaking to you about our, an update on our 3 through 5 science adoption recommendation. So I'm really excited to be sharing with you our recommendation for a new curriculum adoption. This is an effort that reflects months of thoughtful collaborative work by the 3 through 5 Science Curriculum Adoption Committee, grounded in research, educator input, and student needs. This presentation will walk you through our review process, the high-quality instructional materials, HQIM, we've selected to recommend, and how it will align with our district's goals for rigorous, equitable science education. At this time, I do want to extend my sincere thank you to the committee for their exceptional dedication to this effort. Their hard work and commitment will have a lasting positive impact on our students' science experiences for years to come. So I know that the committee is deeply familiar with our adoption process, as we just heard, to the point where you could probably be presenting about it. But for the people watching at home, and just to keep us grounded in the structure, I did want to review the four-phase process or the approach that we take when adopting curriculum. First is Phase 1, called Learning and Prepare, which means building a foundation and a shared vision. Next is Phase 2, Investigate and Select, where the adoption committee goes through rounds of reviewing, analyzing, and choosing materials with a final recommendation of one selection. Then comes the launch phase, where the strategic rollout plan is developed, accompanied by high-quality professional learning, designed to equip staff with the tools and support they need for successful implementation. Finally, Implement and Monitor. This phase supports maintenance, innovation, and sustainability of the curriculum over time. So I was here in December to update you, and at that time of our last update, we had successfully completed Phase 1. That included establishing a diverse adoption committee, creating a clear selection timeline, building a shared understanding of key content frameworks and HQIM features, reviewing student data through a local lens, setting a vision for evaluating materials, and planning for community engagement. So since our last update, we got into Phase 2, Investigate and Select Phase. We identified four high-quality programs to investigate further, Amplify, No Adam, Experience Science, and Open SIED. Our team engaged in a thorough review, which included vendor presentations, hands-on access to demo accounts, investigation of materials, analysis of third-party evaluation reports, and a close look at future funding opportunities. From there, we selected, oh, can you just go back to that side? Thank you. From there, we selected two top-rated programs, Open SIED and Amplify, to field test in classrooms across the district. We piloted one unit from each curriculum, allowing us to gather firsthand teacher and student feedback. Additionally, we analyzed the financial and operational systems associated with these two options, ensuring that whatever we recommend is not only instructionally sound, but also sustainable and scalable for our district. Our decision-making process for selecting a new curriculum was deeply rooted in data and feedback, ensuring that we not only met, meet instructional priorities, but also made fiscally responsible choices that support long-term sustainability as well. I will now take you through the steps I just reviewed to show you how every decision we made in our committee was guided by research and data. We began by developing a data collection tool that was grounded in key features of high-quality science instruction. This tool allowed us to systemically evaluate four potential curricula, ensuring each one met the necessary instructional. ensuring each one met the necessary instructional criteria. We also considered critical additional data sources, such as curate and ed report ratings, teacher feedback, and real-world neighboring classroom experiences, and state grant opportunities tied to HQIM adoption. It's important to note that many state, federal, and private grants are only available to districts that adopt greenlit HQIM, making our next decision not only an instructional priority, but a strategic financial one as well. This drove us to narrow down our options to two greenlit HQIM programs, Open Sied and Amplify Science. Over 20 teachers from across the district participated in the field test of these options. It was also at this time that I met with the curriculum subcommittee and member Seto White to provide an update on our progress and next steps. Since then, we've collected and analyzed teacher feedback on the field test through a standardized survey tool to ensure consistency and objectivity. We then evaluated the program's alignment not only with our instructional goals, but our financial and operational systems using a rubric. This ensured we were making a decision that would be sustainable within our budget and resources. Finally, we triangulated all that data from our multiple sources, so the materials review, the field test survey results, and the analysis of the operational and financial systems. The culmination of this process led us to make our final well-informed recommendation, which is Open Sied. Open Sied is a nationally recognized, high-quality instructional curriculum designed for elementary, middle, and high school science. Already in use in our middle schools, Open Sied is helping to shape science instruction around real-world problems, hands-on learning, and equity-driven practices. This open-source curriculum is rooted in project-based learning. Every unit begins with an authentic problem or phenomenon, something students might encounter in the real world, which sparks curiosity and drives inquiry. From there, students take the lead, asking questions, conducting investigation, analyzing data, and designing solutions, all while engaging in collaborative, discussion-based learning. Open Sied is grounded in research and the belief that all students can engage deeply with science. Its equity-centered approach ensures that instruction is accessible and meaningful for every learner. In addition to strong science instruction, Open Sied for elementary also supports math and literacy development. Students develop and use models like graphs and tables, analyze patterns and interpret data across units, building critical skills that support both math and science understanding. Units also incorporate a range of text types and custom books or articles to connect science content with reading, writing, and scientific communication. Open Sied assessments go beyond rote memorization. Each unit includes performance-based tasks that mirror the type of problem-solving and reasoning expected on the next generation of MCAS innovative assessments, ensuring our students are both prepared and confident. Open Sied not only aligns with our instructional vision, but it is a free and open resource, meaning educators already have access to all the instructional resources without any licensing costs. The district is only responsible for the price of lab kits and professional learning. Open Sied represents a fiscally responsible investment in sustainable, high-impact teaching and learning. For all these reasons and more, Open Sied was selected by the committee as the recommended science curriculum for grades 3 through 5. In addition to aligning with our instructional vision, Open Sied directly supports the Lynn Public Schools Strategic Plan and our Portrait of a Graduate. For strategic priority number one, Open Sied engages all students in rigorous, phenomena-based science learning that is culturally relevant, linguistically accessible, and grounded in student sense-making, strengthening our instructional core with high-quality, inclusive instruction. For strategic priority number three, Open Sied provides equitable access to innovative, project-based curriculum that promotes critical thinking, collaboration, and inquiry. These experiences lay a strong foundation for the future STEAM pathways and advanced coursework happening in our district. From the earliest grades, Open Sied helps students build the skills and mindsets outlined in our Portrait of a Graduate. Through authentic science investigations, students learn to ask questions, analyze evidence, collaborate with their peers, and take ownership of their learning, fostering confidence, curiosity, and responsible citizenship in a complex world. To date, over 90 districts across Massachusetts have reported using Open Sied in at least one grade span, in one grade span, demonstrating its growing impact statewide. Open Sied first launched in middle school in Massachusetts in 2019 school year, followed by high school, and most recently, now they're releasing their elementary curriculum. I wanted to mention that Massachusetts has played a key role in shaping the curriculum's development and implementation. So this is a curriculum that exists in many states, but Massachusetts in particularly because of their involvement in the field testing, which you can see the communities that field tested the elementary curriculum up on the screen. As part of that state's engagement, Massachusetts districts have participated in state steering committee meetings and provided feedback and guidance on the K through 12 development of the OSE curriculum. Importantly, many of the communities involved in these efforts share similar demographics to ours. This Massachusetts representation ensures our students are reflected in both the curriculum revisions and the local phenomena used in instruction. This participation not only gives a voice to local educators and students, but also helps shape a curriculum that is responsive to the needs of our learners. Professional learning for Open Sied is designed to support teachers through both initial onboarding and ongoing development. In early September of this upcoming school year, teachers will participate in two full days of training during the school day. They'll experience the curriculum as students first, getting a feel for the lessons from a learner's perspective, then shift to reflect as educators. This helps them deeply understand the instructional model, how to navigate the curriculum, and how to use the embedded assessment tools effectively. After teachers have had some time to implement lessons, we'll expand professional learning with a half-day session during the November PD Day. That session will focus on key areas like leaving productive student discussions and making lessons more accessible for all learners. What makes this professional learning especially powerful is that Open Sied uses a train-the-trainer model, and this is just for the elementary span. That means we're building a team of teacher leaders right here in our district. These educators will become local experts who can personalize training and provide ongoing support outside of those professional development days and things like our PLCs, our professional learning communities. This model not only enhances the professional learning experience, but it ensures we have the capacity to sustain and grow our implementation from within. From here, after a recommendation, our next steps would include working with an implementation team to organize and distribute a detailed professional learning plan, ensuring sessions are well-paced, collaborative, and grounded in what teachers need most. So you heard from Kristin tonight, and there is some overlap, really when it comes to professional learning for just some groups of grade three and grade four teachers. So we really are working closely together to take a strategic approach to that curriculum, support in professional learning, especially for those groups of teachers that are going to be implementing both new science and social studies curriculum. Our goal is to avoid overload and provide the right support at the right time, so we've already been planning a few creative ways to do this. As we plan for professional learning in science, our top priority is ensuring that it's meaningful, manageable, and respectful for teachers' time and capacity, especially with those two overlap areas. We know our educators are balancing multiple demands, so we're designing this support to be clear, focused, and directly tied to classroom practice. So we're taking approaches like having the first unit taught, science and social studies, share time during the instructional minutes. So a teacher's either during that block teaching science or social studies. We're going to switch this up for the, at least the first two units of implementation. That's just one of the ways that we're considering that teachers, those few teachers in particular that are going to be doing new curriculum for both science and social studies. So the first unit will be science, so they can receive the professional learning on that, focus on the implementation of that. And then the second unit will be social studies, fully taught with no breaks, so they can then focus on the professional learning and implementation for that. Back to specifically Open Sied, in addition to OSE being an instructional resource, it has the advantage of on-demand support available to all educators for free right now. I mean, tonight, really, any teacher in our district could create an account and have the entire curricula and a plethora of PD resources at their disposal. There are educator communities and professional learning networks already in place, including active teacher groups where resources, ideas, and strategies are shared regularly. Also available on opensied.org are recorded webinars for every single unit that walk through lessons, highlight instructional moves, and address common misconceptions. Open Sied offers specialized resources for multilingual learners and webinars focused on instructional topics like MLL instruction, or something like establishing a classroom culture, or supporting equitable discussions. This means our educators have support at their fingertips from the second we have our recommendation approved. So from the second we adopt, there will be no wait for any professional learning. It'll be all right there at their fingertips. So they'll feel confident and connected as they begin implementing the curriculum outside of those professional learning days that we'll also be providing. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of our recommendation to adopt Open Sied for grades 3 through 5 science. We're excited about the opportunity to bring this high-quality, research-based curriculum to our students and teachers, and we appreciate your continued support in strengthening science education across our district. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you for the presentation.
Of course.
I have a quick question about supplies. Like, I love the idea. I love the project-based learning. But a lot of our elementary schools in our secondary, middle schools, sometimes they get kits, and then after a year goes by or the next year, it's, they're unable to have them filled. So you have the concept, you have the project base, you have all this nice stuff, but then we don't have the supplies, and the teachers have to go and pay out of pocket for them. So my question to you is, how will we fill this? Is it in the budget that every year, whatever supplies? Like, do they have a checklist? They're missing this, 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 and then they get it filled?
So I'll speak to that in a few ways. One, first, actually, I completely agree. We can't do science without the hands-on materials. And for this curriculum specifically, it is so investigation-heavy that the students really do require those kits in order to implement or engage in this curriculum. And so I'm really grateful to have had, experienced our rollout for this for middle school. And the district did provide all of the kits for the middle school units, as well as we just created this year an inventory system where we have teacher leaders at each school who are able to inform me of exactly what we need for those refill consumables for the kits, as well as any durables, so the things that are expected to be used each year that may be damaged. And so we are prepared to provide those for the next upcoming school year and onward. And we'll apply that same routine to elementary as well. Something else that I'd like to say is that with Open Sied, out of all of the curricula that we examined, it is the most sustainable for the reason that we do not have to renew licensing fees every single year. So that frees up the costs to add the consumables that you need to keep those kits replenished so that students can engage in the hands-on activities every single year. And then the third thing I'll say is, we piloted this year, and I believe we're going to be continuing it next year, at our middle schools and our high schools, a gift card system. Because as you know, with science instruction, a lot of the materials are perishable, and a lot of them, we can just go right to the grocery store and buy. And so we reduced that out-of-pocket cost for teachers by providing them with Market Basket gift cards. I created a whole system to make sure that they were used in a way that we have like a nice management system for. So they've been able to go and purchase chicken wings for anatomy dissection, or they can go and they can get, you know, really anything that they need. There's a system for that. So if we're finding a need for that, I would certainly include that in my proposal for future years to maintain that at elementary as well.
Thank you. I think you covered all the bases. I'd be a happy science teacher. I wouldn't have to pay so much.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Now we have City Arts and Sciences Academy Facilities and Opening Updates.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Yeah. Are you okay if we start?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Chris Nork, and I know I've met some, but not all of you. So I'm the principal at CASA. Excited to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to share some updates with you all. So just to start with enrollment, when I started April 1st, the goal was to have 100 students in each grade, and we have already met that, and then we've opened up more seats. When I came over tonight, we were up to 237, and I have 48 new applications I have to process. As applications are coming in, I'm starting to see a trend of 7th, 8th, 10th, and 11th graders applying. So that is exciting, that the brand is starting to spread, and there's more interest growing in other grades. It also is time-consuming, because then I have to send unfortunate notes saying, we can't, you know, have your child come at this point. But, you know, the numbers are growing. There's a lot of excitement. I've been, since April break, I've been visiting the middle schools to connect with the 8th graders who have already been accepted. I'm blown away by the energy that they bring me. When I stand in front of the classrooms, the kids who are coming are excited to raise their hand, which is an unusual thing for an 8th grader. And then their friends are starting to ask interesting questions about project-based learning. And I'm finding even students who are going to FDCA or Tech, they might still say, hey, you know what, I'm still going to go there, but they're asking questions about, well, what is project-based learning? Can you tell me more about your schedule? So there is just a natural buzz that's growing. And then I'm excited to start getting into some of the elementary schools. Anthony at Washington set up a nice community event for me on Monday to just connect with them and that STEM pathway, to make sure those families know that they could still apply as we've opened up more seats. Some other things I've been working on since April 1st is just some other things that we're trying to do. So when I first came on, we So when I first came on, we were talking about doing some professional development with our staff. So we're calling it a STEM pop-up event. We had a professor that was on the design team, and he's going to stay with us. So he's going to bring some of his undergrad and grad students and what we have for staff. We're going to open it up to enrolled families and students. And it's going to be June 6th, 7th, and 8th, where we all will collectively work as equals to do a project-based learning experience. And then we're going to continue that June 19, 21, 22, based in the Lynn Juneteenth event. So we'll go, we'll experience, and then we'll do some reflection over the weekend as a teacher institute. And that time is philanthropy-funded. There's been some donors even before I got here that have donated to STEM pathways, and they're interested to grow teacher capacity. So we're intending to use some of their donor money to, to pay the teachers to, to do this. Through July, we'll continue to work on curriculum development. I've been meeting with the curriculum directors just to start touching base on what this will look like. We plan to have a teacher institute August 25 to 29. Again, that will be philanthropy-funded to start developing our capacity to build the community as teachers and to start really unpacking project-based learning and then the dynamic schedule that we have. I've been telling families as they've been enrolled that I do plan to have an open house, just, you know, being flexible with the construction. And as soon as we're able to get in safely, we'll start showing off the space. And then I've been doing weekly updates on Parent Square with the enrolled families, just sharing the different things that we've been working on. So some of those things are partnerships. Company One was on the design team. They're a theater group out of Boston, and we've, not just CASA, some of the other middle schools, we have a grant where they'll have an artist in residency in the fall to do a 6th grade theater production with us. Very excited to partner with Lynn Music Foundation. They were also on the design team, and we just got together, started talking about possibilities, sharing what the flex schedule will look like on that flex day to get students out in the community doing projects. And it just came out that Edwin has, I don't know how much I'm supposed to talk about it, but he has a hip-hop documentary on hip-hop in Lynn that's coming out. And I was like, "Oh, a documentary? Do you want to do a documentary on CASA?" And he, like, couldn't contain himself. So that's going to partner with our film program, where he will then, you know, take our students through pre-production, production, post-production. And then that'll be one of our long-term projects to have as our exhibition, exhibition in the spring. And that's something he said we can keep iterating on as we grow and have year zero, year one, year two. So that's exciting. Met with Lynn Lab recently. They're a, a program in the city and was talking about the bio readiness of Lynn. So he's excited to start partnering with us. And things that he is interested to explore is bacteria and pollution in our neighborhood, particularly on the Common, and would, would partner with us to take students out there on those flex days to do some sampling, track the data, come up with interventions, try the intervention, track the impact to try to have a positive impact on the, you know, a couple of blocks around CASA. RAW Arts is excited to partner with us. They're going to support the opening of the school as we establish our identity and community. So they have a project that they've run before with other schools called Art Tag, with like the game of tag we used to play when we were kids. Well, we'll send groups of 25 over to RAW. They'll work on building community with them. They'll take that time, make an art project, bring it back, install it at CASA, and then tag the next group. And then that group has to riff off of and iterate off of what they have. So that'll be an ongoing project on the Wednesdays to open the school, to help us establish our community and our identity. Some really exciting things. It's just, I think, serendipitous with the way the, the national climate is with grant funding kind of disappearing. Tufts and Salem State are real excited to partner with us at this point because they're also looking for opportunities as their grants have been cut off. So Tufts, we will have a professor working out of the building one day a week to, to coach and support teachers with STEM and project-based learning. He's from the Tufts Education Teacher Development Practicum. So he's excited to come there. And then he's also looking for a place now because his grant got cut off to bring his undergrads to get that student teaching and fellowship experience. So he's going to look into bringing them with him when he comes. Salem State was real excited when I talked to them about our flex schedule. They have a dip in their enrollment just in the STEM field. So it's, you know, one hand washing the other. They want to send their STEM professors, not necessarily for the education track, but to have Salem, Lynn students matriculate to go into STEM fields. So they're volunteering their time to teach workshops that will be open to CASA students, to staff, and families to just come and experience something. And then they're also excited, looking for opportunities, to send their undergrad classes to get mentor hours, to come on those Wednesday flex days and be part of those groups that we have to just sit alongside our students. And Tufts and Salem State together are trying to bring NOICE. NOICE has been a STEM organization for 25 some odd years out of upstate New York. So the two universities together are trying to create a Boston hub. And Salem State is trying to do it, Tufts is trying to do it, and CASA just happened to be the glue that got the professors talking. And so we're excited to bring that to LPS and then just to the North Shore. Other upcoming meetings I have with folks and some initial email conversations, Girls Inc., the Pem is excited to meet with us to see what they could do. The president, Monsera, is very interested in what we have going on, so we have a meeting coming up. The Lynn Museum, Lynn TV. I met the education outreach person from the Boston Symphony Orchestra, and he's been trying to just bring the BSO to the Lynn Auditorium for years. So, you know, he's looking at ways to try to do that with LPS. Ascend Get Lifted is a store in Salem who's also, the owner is also a philanthropist, but he's interested in doing things like meditation and social, emotional learning pro bono, just to have, you know, kids come to his store. But also, he's a philanthropist and wants to donate to that type of work. And then the Museum of Science has an education outreach program that I've had some initial conversations, and they're, you know, interested in, in just talking more. We also have a grant for Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way is a multi-year curricula where we will launch it as 6th graders, and then we build 6th, 7th, and 8th, where it's really the design and modeling process. Well, they'll, the curriculum presents problems to students, and then they have to figure out how to solve the problem, pulling in their STEM classroom experiences. We have the grant to, to send two teachers to their training. So those two teachers will teach that Project Lead the Way as an elective. And then through that grant, then it will have a 7th grade curriculum and an 8th grade curriculum over the next three years. Let's see. Project-based learning, that's something that's been happening in the district even before I came here. So we're just happy to have CASA just partner and jump in on that of what that means, what is a gold standard project? How does it pull multiple disciplines together? What is that question that's going to drive students to catch their interest, to have them go and focus on something for long periods of time? So we're just tagging into the other middle schools that have been doing the PBL. And this is something that I'm excited, just talking to the other principals, you know, that I've met, that we would like to partner with them just in the city to open up these opportunities where we do see CASA as a fluid space where other schools could send their kids to us. We'll send our kids there, particularly through just like opening the building. This conversation started with music of like, okay, we have students who are, are already in music, but we're small to start. So we were like talking about using that flex day to send kids in and out and then just open our doors so other students in the city could just participate on these flex days. Let's see. Again, we're having some curriculum conversations with the directors. We all meet as a team for the first time next week, and then we'll look at, you know, other meetings throughout the spring and over the summer, just to really dive into the program of studies and what we could all do to bring this to life. I've been visiting schools. I've been acting like a grad student, seeing how other schools in the area do STEM and do STEAM and have different pathways. So some of those schools are listed here. Those principals want to keep in touch as we open and just to support each other as, you know, different schools are trying to be innovative and, and push boundaries. Let's see. I'll let other folks take it from here, and then, you know, you can ask questions at the end.
Thanks, Chris. As you all can see, Principal Norken is very excited about CASA coming online this fall, and we have quite the buzz around the city from families and students who are eager to be enrolled. So as far as the staffing plan is concerned for CASA, it's specifically to meet both the specialized learning that's planned for the school and provide the specialized teachers for equity and access for all students. The staff will be working together to make cross-curricular connections between core content areas, fine arts, and technology. So the students will have those skills reinforced throughout those contents. So they clearly will see the relevance. Our goal is to ensure that CASA is upholding the, the portrait of a graduate and developing our students to be problem solvers, critical thinkers, and engaged community members for global society. The total teaching and non-teaching staff to serve 300 students will be 25, similar to FDCA staffing model, which is currently 25.6 staff members for 264 students and growing. If you look up here, as far as teachers are concerned, we'll have two humanities teachers, an English teacher, two art teachers, a music teacher, two maths, a dance teacher, two sciences, a technology teacher, and a Spanish teacher. From those teaching positions, 12 are transfers from open middle school and high school positions or positions that principals decided to close or for programs that were under-enrolled and were closed. We are adding three sped teachers, which is new. We didn't do that with FDCA. We are doing it with CASA. We want to make sure that students, regardless of their educational plans, have access to this program, as well as two English language development teachers, as we know that our numbers for our students who are English language learners is over 47% newcomers. We want to make sure that everybody has access. Therefore, we also have one regular ed teacher that's a new position. So we have a total of 18 new teachers for CASA. We have a clerk that will be a transfer from the special ed department, a guidance counselor, a family community engagement coordinator, a nurse that would be shared with the Fecto-Liri Alternative Education Program, a paraprofessional to ensure inclusion is going well with our students, cafe workers, 2.5 new ones. We will be serving 300-plus students in the building, a program specialist, and the principal. So for the 300 students, just want to kind of help you understand, we currently have a middle school student that is three grades. Our SWALAS is 583 students with 82 staff members. So we are very much maximizing the number of staff members to service 300 students at CASA. For facilities update, and the city, Mike Donovan is here to answer more questions. But just to give you an overview, we have Phase 1 happening now for an opening of September 2025. The construction period will begin as soon as school ends on June 23rd and will go up to August 22nd. CASA students will be in the second and third floor of the academic space in that building. Fecto-Liri Alternative Education Program will remain on the first floor and the basement spaces that are there that they've been using. Phase 2 for September of 2026, we hope all completion of upgrades to the first floor and ground floor will happen the summer of 2026 with grades 7 and 10 joining CASA community and the Fecto-Liri Alternative Education relocating to the Eastern Bank Building where FDCA will also be located and the central administrative offices will be located. That program will be on the second floor.
So these are some of the images that I've been sharing with students when I go to just connect with them about CASA. These photos up here, Malden High School has had a, a pathway similar to what we're doing at CASA. It's, they've been doing it for about 12 years, so they're much farther along. But some of the things that I share with them, the, one of the projects that Malden High is, is famous for or kind of recognized for is what they do with their food donation. So the idea was that the students went to city council, asked how they could help. City council said, "We have a, a food shortage in our food pantry." So then the students went back, figured out what they could do to help their community. So they created a hydroponic grow lab, and they built greenhouses. And then they grow fruits and vegetables, harvest, and then donate to the food pantry. And so when I explain this to the kids and I show them the pictures, you know, this is all student-created. They're pulling in their math, their science, they're using the humanities to go interview city councilors to come back. They're working on marketing skills to brand, to then invite people to their greenhouse. So when I am explaining that to students of like, "This is how you would show teachers you understand the math, the science, this is how you grow your humanities skills," that's where I'm starting to get a lot of questions, and curiosity is piqued. So that's, that's one model at, at Malden. So I, you know, highlighted some of those pictures. But these, this is some of the examples. Swamp Scott High School also has two different makerspaces. They have a Makerspace 101, and then they call it Pathways to Engineering. But in the Makerspace 101, it's open for any student where they could go in, do podcasting, they could do film, they have sewing machines, so students could just riff and do stuff there. Some of the other things at Swamp Scott where they, in their pathway, they, they do it a little bit different where they do reverse engineering. And so they'll challenge their students, for example, to build a ukulele. So then the students have to under, understand the music theory, they have to understand the geometry, they have to know how to use the wood tools, they have to sketch, design, pull it all out, they have to know how deep the chamber has to be, how big the circle has to be, how tense the strings have to be. And when I start explaining that to our students of that's how you could show your music, your engineering, your math, your science, that's where I'm getting a lot of excitement from the kids. The other picture here was a design, a lock-and-key system that works. So they have to understand the physics, they have to know how to program a 3D printer to make the gears, they have to know how to cut the wood, put it all together. And then the idea is if it works, you pass. If it doesn't, you have to iterate again and go back and keep redesigning. And then, this is from Baxter Academy up in Maine. They're, they're a proper STEM academy that's interested in introducing the arts, so it's an interesting partnership for us. What I'm telling the kids, the drone on the right, the student made that from nothing. So he learned how to program the computer to print out on the 3D printer every single piece of that. He deconstructed electronics, figured out how to weld and put them back together to make his own remote control, and then he walked out at the end of the trimester with a working drone. Which, which when I start explaining that to students that like, "Oh, I could learn how to do that? I could do that myself." That's where I'm getting a lot of excitement. Let's see, some of our other pictures, this is, has, has really caught students' ideas or captured their ideas. The picture on the right is a fashion design from Boston Arts Academy. We've had a lot of students ask me, "Could I do fashion?" And I start telling them about theater, and then they need to have wardrobe and designing that, and then students really light up, "Wow, I could go do that." The bottom left picture has captured a lot of interest too. So that particular project, the students leave campus, they go to pawn shops, they buy broken equipment, they bring it back, they refurbish, and then they've launched their own eBay webpage for like student profit, and they're running that through Baxter Academy. And then that's something especially is catching the 8th graders' eyes. They're like, "Whoa, I could start my own business." I'm like, "Absolutely. We can find ways to monetize your projects." And then this is something that's catching the eyes of our artists. So I, I tell them, when I went to Baxter, or, this is from Boston, I'm sorry, this is from Baxter. When I walked into their 2D mural room, the, the paintings on the wall were, were absolutely breathtaking. But then the science teacher challenged them, "Well, take your mural and make it 3D." So then they had to pull in their computer science understanding to scan their picture in, learn how to program and print it all out to turn their murals into 3D. And that's really catching our kids' eyes too of like, "Wow, I could have learned how to do that." That's pretty, pretty wild. Let's see. So these are some other, just grants that we, that Dr. Gardner has submitted and has connected with people that we're, we're working on. And then also try to, to solicit some philanthropy. So Dr. Gardner might be able to speak to some more of this, as she's the one who's been writing the grants. The ECCF or the Essex Community Foundation cold-called us. They just heard about CASA, and they have donors who are interested in some of the things that we were talking about. Bar Foundation is interested in funding professional development on this type of innovated schedule and project-based learning to just support our teachers as we innovate and try to create a new school.
As we're thinking through the different opportunities for CASA, we are also pursuing the DCE innovation pathways to put through some STEM and CTE pathways in the near future at CASA. So we have an informational meeting happening. So we have an informational meeting happening now in May, in a couple of weeks. Any questions?
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, I can see the excitement when you speak, Principal Norcom. So it's great to see. Just a couple of quick questions, Lisa. I hope they're quick. We'll see. Could you just break down the numbers between sixth and ninth grade? So how many sixth graders and ninth graders? You had mentioned 100, 100, but that doesn't seem...
So current enrollment, right, as of today, when I left, we have 102 ninth grade and 137 sixth grade. And I have 40-some-odd applications today that I haven't gotten to yet. I've been averaging about 20 or so applications a day. At this point, like I said, many are starting to come in with grades seven, eight, 10, 11, looking to try to get in. But that's where the numbers are as of today when I came over. And these are like hard confirmed because then I'll like reach out, I'll speak to the families to make sure that a student just didn't fill out the application. The caregivers are aware that, yes, I want my child to come to CASA.
So these are hard, yes?
These are hard.
These are hard, yeses. Okay.
Wrong, 230.
Yeah. 237, as of, yeah, when I came over.
Okay. And then of the, I guess I'm a little confused on the staff numbers. You said 18, but then there was another 25. So how many have we actually hired so far?
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't, we've only hired him.
No staff that's been hired?
There's no staff hired yet. We have to go through the process, through the LTU process of posting positions.
Oh, right, okay.
Right. So that hasn't happened yet. We are in the process of deciding on a date with LTU to roll that out as we were trying to work through budgetary.
Okay. Barometer for, I mean, how's our staff feeling about maybe leaving English and coming over? Like, do we have a feel for that or?
I don't have much of a thought on that.
Yeah, we're not, yeah. We are not really allowed to like advertise it.
Gotcha.
It has to go through the posting process.
Yeah, understood.
What I could tell you is total teaching and non-teaching staff is 25 positions we have available.
Understood.
I'm sorry, 23.
So 23?
He's 24, and we did have a position that we decided to freeze for this year.
Okay, so it'd be 24.
Four.
24, not 25, okay. And then the funding sought, so the grant and philanthropic funding sought, are these major things that we would need this money for? Like, in other words, if this money didn't come through? Let's say JetBlue didn't come through with their money. What happens then in that case?
Well, it's really for professional development and the JetBlue one. The other ones are for help with the cost for Makerspace, creating the Makerspaces that we want to have in the building. So continuing to pursue other grants.
If that money doesn't come through, you would pursue other grants?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
John, Member Reed.
Member Dugan took two of my questions.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Oh, I see on the, and I have a question for Mike or someone else, but the construction for the Phase One is set to end the last week in August. It's a little bit tight of a schedule, obviously, as many of these construction projects are. Is there any type of backup plan or any type of sort of thinking? What would happen if unfortunately something was slowed down or delayed? Not to be pessimistic.
Mayor, do you want the mic to come up or do you want me to take?
Yeah, we can invite Mike Donovan, who's here, who's the head of the city's newly formed capital units, capital projects unit, and is, whose office is overseeing the work?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The schedule for construction is very tight. It's two months. The work that we're doing in the schools, the classrooms will be the primary focus to get done for us, the painting, ceilings, lighting, and then the science, getting the casework in. What we anticipate might cause us delays would be if casework doesn't come in on time or equipment that's ordered doesn't arrive when we need it. But the intent will be, and we've done this in the past, is to have the classrooms open, so the students will be able to access the classrooms. We're probably 95% done with the renovations of the toilets in the basement. The gang toilets down in the basement had been closed for years. So they've been totally renovated, new fixtures, new lighting, new walls. We're working on the lift, the handicap lift for the front of the building to make the building accessible. The bid came in for the fire alarm upgrade, which will start as soon as we can, you know, get them going, probably after 23rd or so of June. And then if they don't finish, there is a fire alarm system in the building, but this is a brand-new fire alarm system because of the larger amount of students, more notification devices, et cetera. If they don't finish in time, they'll work in the evenings, complete it, and then switch the systems over. The electrical system upgrade is being designed now, and that will be going out to bid. And that work will entail a long lead time for the electronic gear, the switchgear to command. So that's not anticipated till start, till next summer. If we can start some of the work down in, you know, electrical room, boiler room, that type of stuff during the school year, we will. But given the history of ordering electrical equipment, it's highly unlikely we'll see any equipment that we order any closer than 24 to 30 weeks. So we have had delays before. We try to work as best as we can with the school to make sure that the students won't be highly disrupted. They'll have their areas and the common areas. We're not doing a lot of work in the gym, the cafeteria at this point in time. There'll be some paint and paperwork, but there's no, not the upgrades that the science rooms are gonna see. So it's being phased because with a two-month construction season, realistically, you can't get a lot done at once. And we can't close the building. So over time, we're going to keep doing work in the building to make the improvements. But when the students come in, they'll see paint, lighting, new lighting, new ceilings, and repairs that needed to be made to make the building more hospitable.
Thank you.
Member Castellanos.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
One more question. Thanks, Mike. For the sort of rollout of the application process, was there a big sort of role in it first? It sounds like it might be more gradual solely coming in. Is that because of, you know, learning more about it or spreading the word? Or what sort of, how does that been?
Yeah, I can speak to my experience with that. So I started April 1st. The application process happened late January. I know letters went out end of February. What I experienced sifting through everything when I sat down, we were almost at capacity for sixth grade. So I haven't touched sixth grade. It's just been a trickle here, a trickle there. Somebody's neighbor finds out about it and calls. It wasn't until last week where I targeted some schools because I didn't get a lot from certain schools and I got some from other schools. So I called those principals and says, "Hey, like, we're opening up more seats for sixth grade. Like, let's target your kids first." Ninth grade was different. What I found, when I sat down, we had very few ninth graders because I think it was the same cohort of students who applied to FDCA, Tech, CASA. They got in to two or three of the schools and then picked FDCA and Tech. I would assume, this is an assumption, that they just don't know what CASA is. I will say, and I'm getting students from LVTI saying, "Well, can I transfer over now?" Or FDCA, "Can I still apply?" So I've been intentional. I've gone to the middle schools, gone to the classrooms, and have, just the speech that I gave you, I have given kids. And so I went from 25 ninth graders to 102 in a week and a half just by me going to classrooms and explaining, you know, what CASA is. And it warms my heart coming out of high school and just having to call parents on the discipline side where I'm having parents saying, "I haven't had my kid come home and be excited about school in a long time. And I can't believe they came home and said, 'Mom, Dad, can you sign me up for CASA.'" So it's been giving me chills to just have that reaction. It's been exciting.
Thank you. Just one last, this might be a request for, I don't know who. But is there any way we can get a sheet of all the past and future renovations? I know we've talked about them piecemeal over time, but just to see us all in front of this. Because I, some of these numbers, I think it's the first time I'm hearing about them. Like the electrical service number, it's obviously a pretty high price tag. And I understand it's city-side and all that, but I just think it would be helpful when assessing this, so.
Are you talking specifically the FECTO-Lerri building?
Yes.
So in the packet here is the memo on the status.
Right.
Yeah.
But there's just like no numbers next to this stuff, I guess, is what I'm...
For which, for which stuff?
For all these.
The list in the back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just curious. Like, because I know some of the stuffs are obviously already been working on. And then going forward, I would just be curious.
Yeah, I don't know that all of these are broken out. Like, some of them are curricular or technology or whatever. But I think we can, you know, we can actually add a level of detail to the construction.
Yeah, the capitals.
Yeah, yeah.
Side of things. Thanks. I'm done. Thank you.
Member Castellanos.
Well, kind of piggyback off Member Reed. Just some clarification around the, so there's two parts. The waivers, some of these tasks are gonna require waivers from DESI. What's gonna require waivers in the project renovations? So this is probably Mr. Donovan, sorry.
Yeah, and well, and it's all, Mr. Donovan can come up. But the waivers, so we're at the, looking at the memo here on the funding. There's a, DESI has a cap on the amount any given project can cost and be paid for at a net school spending. It's $150,000. So for a project to be paid for by net school spending that exceeds $150,000, it requires a waiver from DESI. So we've done that in the past for, you know, roof projects or HVAC projects or, you know.
Heating.
Yeah, heating. And the things listed here, you know, obviously they're on $150,000. So that those were required.
So are we looking specifically, so the fire alarm upgrade and then the electrical service upgrade? We're looking for waivers to cover that? Is that what you're saying? This is the paragraph, like the second to last paragraph, with the 800-plus thousand for the distribution upgrade. Would that be the waiver we're talking about or?
Right. Yep.
And does that waiver include like that process? Like, do they give like 100%? Do they usually 50%? Like, do they usually cover, like, is there usually, this is, I guess, like, what's that process look like to secure the waiver?
Yeah, it's a request that the Lynn Public Schools submits to the commissioner of DESI, and it's just a yes or no. It's not, it's not a percentage of the amount. At least in the past, that's how it's gone. You might recall that we have really pushed DESI to increase the threshold because $150,000, that threshold was set in 2012. And given of the costs of all of these projects and materials and construction, we think it's really outdated. And so it is, you know, creates something of a bottleneck to have to go get these waivers. But we have done them fairly regularly over the last several years.
So my question is, why haven't we done this in the past for FECTO-Lerri before CASA then? If that's the case, why haven't we tried to ask for these waivers? Because it looks like these are, so Mr. Donovan, sorry. These are older, are these older renovations that we just never requested to have fixed?
Yeah, the reason why we're doing these now is because we're...
Increasing enrollment.
Exactly.
I understand. So, sorry, Mr. Donovan. So when we, as we pursue this, what's the timeline to find out whether we get the yes or no? Very important.
Superintendent would submit a request to DESI and they'll turn it around generally within 60 days or less.
Yeah, it's DESI's timeline, not our timeline.
Wow. And when do we anticipate the submit piece to happen?
Well, we would, I would submit a letter with a proposal of what the work is going to be and the consideration for them to approve the waiver to have us let it include, to have that cost included in net school spending.
When would you submit that though, estimate? What's the date? Because it's 60 days allegedly we have to wait for.
Right. So anything that's proposed and Mike gives to us, then we would go ahead and submit before the work is done. I mean, if we do the work and we spend the money and they say no to the waiver, it just doesn't count towards net school spending. I mean, there isn't, there isn't much that we can do to make them decide otherwise.
Yeah, and that's obviously a problem for the city financially if that were to happen. But we have had success in getting these waivers. And the feedback we've gotten from the DESI folks and particularly the Haley Driscoll administration is that they recognize the limitation of this threshold and, you know, they've been supportive for the prior waivers.
And the fixtures, furnishings, and equipment, I think Member Reed was asking to have that broken down. But do we have a good cost estimate for that? I think that's like, again, like I think when he was asking, I know there was equipment, there was furniture. Chris, you did a great job presenting like the hope and vision. I think my concern is, is it sustainable? Are we able to produce that? Because it sounds like there's a lot of costs, a lot of... And the timeline for construction is very condensed. And being part of, obviously, the Pick and Build and School Committee project, I've seen construction be very unpredictable in timeline and management. What's project management look like right now? Like, I guess like the cost of like just even the capital planning project unit. Mike, we just saw this on May 6, 2025. I feel like this has been very important to, this is very important. I appreciate this very much. It's very actually helpful as we're trying to make decisions. And I know we just got the budget, so we'll have to obviously break it down some more and ask our questions as we go forward. But I'm also noticing that in the grant and philanthropic funding sought, a lot of it's like, maybe, right? Submit it, submit it, submit it, maybe. We got the Project Lead the Way grant. There's two teachers that will receive PD over three years, but is that gonna be sustainable with the numbers that you guys are projecting? Because it doesn't even sound like you guys are gonna stop at the 300. I think we were looking at a max of 600. So 600 is due, correct? I feel like this, usually it's like, you know, you go slow to go fast. I feel like that's been the history with us a little bit with these type of projects. And now I feel like these are, we're going really fast. And I think I need time to really digest all this. It's a lot. I appreciate, this presentation's been very helpful, actually. You guys have just given us all this to break down because I think this is very, actually very helpful.
Do you have a question regarding the timeline in the project?
Concern about the timeline.
Concern, okay.
Yeah, the timeline. And because it says due to, honestly, I'm reading the capital project unit memo that was sent by Mr. Donovan, who's been around for a long time. And I really, I've seen his work throughout the years in our district. And I take his words very serious. So when I see his writing and what he reports, it's a really, it's a significant weight. Considering like, again, I think the superintendent and the team, you guys have presented some really, really relevant fiscal challenges that we're up against. So I want to consider that too as well as we're looking to expand into this program. Especially we're expanding a lot throughout the district. And I'm very concerned about the sustainability of this project. I am. I don't know. I think there's a lot more to look into, but...
Are you concerned, when you say the sustainability, are you concerned with the financial sustainability?
Financial sustainability, the construction cost of it, the staff in peace.
So can I clarify on the construction that is already in the city's budget? It's not in our budget. And if I could finish, we're also in a tight turnaround timeline for FDCA and the therapeutic program to move into Eastern Bank. So we don't have a backup plan for FDCA. They don't have a location. So we are...
About CASA.
No, but we have two schools that are opening up in different locations that are both under construction.
No, I understand, but this is tonight about CASA.
You were concerned about the sustainability of the construction? And I'm giving, I'm giving you the perspective of the construction is also happening for FDCA. So both have to then be considered if you're concerned about the tight turnaround because it's gonna be happening over the summer at both locations. So that would be, so our capacity at FDCA is growing from 264 to over 425. So that'd be 425 plus 237 students we'd need to consider. What are we gonna do with? What are we going to do with come next year? If there's a change in direction for those schools opening up in the fall.
Respectfully, we also had the lease that we were negotiating with North Shore that we kind of fit. The strategy was, all right, let's get out of that lease to transition. That's why we we. Expanded Frederick Douglass, right? We we were supportive of that because of that. That that strategy was really effective. Then you guys came up with a good, that was a great solution. We're not talking about that. We're talking about Casa. And I'm talking about the specifically tonight. I don't want to go into that yet because we still, we'll get into that conversation.
I was just trying to really understand and paint a picture about the construction timeline that affects. Not only Casa, but also F D C A. So when you're thinking about the 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 budgetary and. Potential construction limits, it's more than one school that's happening to here in the district.
And it just just. On the on the funding point to. In case I I. Didn't explain this. Or just to reiterate, to reiterate that the tho- those. Construction related activities. So we're saying that the furniture fixtures and equipment, the F F and E is coming out of the L P S budget, but the construction is coming out of the the city budget. But it's city budget that counts towards net school spending, and so that's why we need the waiver. Okay. Member Satterway.
Thank you for your presentation, Chris. Great job. So mine kind of piggybacks off of what member Reed and Casa said. Looking at the staff, the positions, well, I understand that a new program comes with new staff, positions, new improvements. I've heard a lot of feedback from other people too, and the main concern is the affordability. We're here discussing budget cuts and then we're pouring a lot of money into this. It's a great program, don't get me wrong, but we just need to. Make sure that we're considering and reviewing, focusing heavily on. The budget and this is going to take up a significant amount of it. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Uh, member Gailey.
Well, I have a few things I want to say. First of all, member Reed. What is the name of that project that the students from Lynn English High School and Lynn Classical High School go to? In West Lynn and they build a boat and then they put it on the ocean? What is the name of that program? What? Kayaking City in Lynn. Now, kayaking City in Lynn is a project base. That's a project based learning and I'll tell you, I've never seen so many excited students. And the space isn't perfect. I don't think that space is perfect. Would you agree? It's safe, but it's not perfect. And it has make a space, it has all these projects going on at the same time and people pay into it. This is basically like this and it's coming out of our money to renovate this. We have two high schools, Lynn English and we have Lynn Classical. Both of them have two hundred, no, two thousand, over two thousand students. And for the past five years, all I've heard about is from those teachers in those buildings that we need to make those spaces smaller. That's what I've heard, that they need smaller. They they're like, we're overcrowded. We can't even walk down the hallways. I know you heard it, right, Mr. Member Reed? You heard that, right? So what this is, is a buildup of changing. It's not going to be overnight. It's going to take a little while. But we are going to change the way the schools are right now so that next year in twenty twenty six. Will have fifteen hundred students at English, fifteen hundred students at Classical. That's what we're moving towards. And this kind of education is exciting.
Sorry, I'm going to be out of order because she is out of order.
You can't, you can't. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm going to because why isn't she being stopped? She's not allowed to address another member of the committee in that manner.
Oh, member Reed, are you taking offense to this?
Yes.
And and member Gailey, just just address through the chair your point, please.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Member Reed, I really didn't mean to. Okay. All right. So. My question to you is, will you have an orientation? For the ninth grades in August?
Yeah, so that if we could get in safely with the construction, wherever that timeline is, yes, we'll have an orientation. I've also, and if we can't, I've also been telling families that the first three days to eight days of school will be orientation, where we will be going slow. Walking the spaces, how do we properly use the spaces? If we are not done with construction, how to safely move around it? But but yeah, as soon as we can get in there and and show people spaces, we'll absolutely have an open house and an orientation.
The only reason why I'm asking that is when Frederick Douglass opened up, they didn't have an orientation and a lot of the kids that had wanted to go to Frederick Douglass. Went to the orientation at Lynn English and then changed their mind. So was it like a slow rollout for them? And I don't want that to happen. What else do I want to ask? I like this idea. I like the project based idea. I know it's successful. I personally have worked in intro to engineering design at Saint Mary's. I watched Saint Mary's roll out a new building and make make a space. And do architecture and all kinds of projects and the students, they're very happy. So I understand there might be financial constraints, but we've been under under the gun for a very, two very overcrowded high schools. That we need to make a change and we need to find spaces to make those changes. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yep. All right, we're going to take a, we're going to take a quick recess. Thank you for that. Does anyone have any other questions they want to address?
I would just say, thank you for the for the presentation, for the updates, and thank you to the members for the thoughtful questions. I know. There are absolutely concerns about our, the timelines of this project and and they're important ones and and ones that I'm sure. You know, we all share and wanted to, wanted to make sure the work gets done and and thinking about contingencies, that's important as well. And so we will continue to be doing that. that's important as well. And so, we will continue to be doing that. And, you know, we'll keep everybody informed as we, as we move forward. So, thank you all for bringing that, bringing that up. And I know that the CPU will plan to send the kind of the next level of detail of costs on the construction side. The FFNE would be on the, would be on the LPS side, so. All right. Any other questions on that? All right. Next item is field trips. It's a recommendation of the superintendent.
The recommendation is for Lynn Woods, grade five, to Kenobi Lake Park, Salem, New Hampshire, on June 16th, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Nice to have it.
The next field trip request is for Lynn Woods, grade five, to Camp Cody, Freedom, New Hampshire, September 22nd, 2025 through September 26th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Nice to have it. If there's no objection, I would be fine taking the rest of these as a single motion.
Oh, yeah, I'd do that.
You just want to read them off?
Sure.
Yeah. Assuming there's the same recommendation from all of them.
Absolutely. Aborn, grade five, to Kenobi Lake Park, Salem, New Hampshire, on June 17th, 2025. Aborn, grade five, to Camp Cody, Freedom, New Hampshire, September 22nd through September 26th, 2025. Marshall Middle, grade eight, to Kenobi Lake Park, Salem, New Hampshire, on June 9th, 2025. English, grade 12, to Kenobi Lake, Salem, New Hampshire, on June 4th, 2025. Lyntech, grade 11, to Courier Museum of Art, Manchester, New Hampshire, on June 4th, 2025. And Lyntech, grade eight, to Kenobi Lake Park, Salem, New Hampshire, on June 16th, 2025.
Still move.
Small amendment is Kenobi.
That's the Florida.
Still move.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am Marie. I'm working on my New England.
Kenobe, Kenobe.
All right. Donations. It's a recommendation of the superintendent.
To accept the following donations. Tony's Pub and Grill, to Lyntech, in the amount of $50. BSN Sports, to Lyntech, in the amount of $116.16. Two, and then two portable raised garden beds for the fruit project, to Marshall Middle School.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Nice to have it. Thank you so much to Tony's BSN and-
Shout out Tonys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have one of annual highlights of the year in Camp Rotary Proposal to Fund 54 Students to Camp Rotary for One Week of Summer Camp. I think Dr. Caddell is here. Amazing. Welcome, welcome back, Dr. Caddell.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Alvarez. Mr. Mayor, and School Committee, and other administrators. I want to say thank you again for having us. Very happy to announce that our Board of Directors has approved, again, the scholarships to allow 54 Lynn students to attend Camp Rotary for a week. It's, it's one of our highlights, too. It just aligns with our mission at camp. So, we're really happy to be able to, to present it every year. So, I just want to say thank you. I did take a look and realized, everybody listened to my presentation last year, so I'm going to just say you can check those notes, because nothing's really changed a whole lot. I'm just very, very happy to be able to, to present it. So, thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Make a motion to- Make a motion to approve?
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And is it true that you're retiring this year?
Whoa. Yes, it is. Yes, this, this will be, this will be the last time you'll see the smiling face. Although, I was just saying, if I didn't attend these meetings once a year, I would be just in the dark. I said, I said, I did text my daughter and say, I think I should get PDPs for this. But, but it is, it is definitely, in all, in all seriousness, as a resident of Lynn, I just wanted to say, it's, it is, it's impressive that the amount of time and attention that the School Committee pays to, to the matters that are, that are here. I appreciate that. And it's also, it's Teacher Appreciation Week for the, for the other side, just to, to be able to recognize everybody and all the hard work. It's just, it's just a reminder of how lucky we are to have people that work as hard for us. So, thanks, thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Wonderful basketball referee as well.
All right. Next, we have the fiscal year '26 budget overview. So, I'm going to kick us off with a couple words, and then Dr. Alvarez and Mr. McHugh has a presentation. As always, you know, the goal here is to support student learning and making sure we, we get families and students and educators what they need. And, and, you know, I think we continue to face and, and work hard every day with our educators at the front lines to reverse the, the learning loss we experienced in the pandemic. And, just to remind folks where we are in the process, we have this presentation tonight. After the presentation, we're going to ask for a vote to set down a public hearing. And we're going to suggest tonight that folks, you know, ask whatever clarifying questions people need to be able to digest, start to digest this, and then recommend that folks send in written questions over the next couple of weeks. And then, the administration will respond to those in writing, and then post the questions and the answers online. That's what we've done the last few years. And then, at the next meeting, which is Thursday, May 29th, we would have it on the agenda again, and would, would do those questions live. So, whatever question that either you already asked, that you want to ask live, or, you know, follow-up questions or whatever. And so, that would be the more substantive Q and A on Thursday, May 29th. And then, what we're hoping is that we schedule tonight, the public hearing, you need 30 days, we scheduled tonight the public hearing that would happen at the first meeting in June, which would be June 12th, and that we would also tee ourselves up to hopefully vote on the budget on, on June, on June 12th. So, that's the plan over the course of the next three meetings, including this one. Just in terms of the bigger picture, the, the financial context, I think that this committee knows well, as does everybody here, that the Lynn Public Schools were drastically underfunded for a long period of time prior to the Student Opportunity Act. And, you know, Gateway Cities, other high-needs districts, working together, you know, with the leadership of the, the AFT, NMTA, and, and our partners on Beacon Hill, got the Student Opportunity Act in place, which has been much-needed investment. We are in the fifth of six years of the, of the Student Opportunity Act. The timing got pushed back a little bit because of the pandemic. But, obviously, that means we're towards the end, right? And I think it's just important context that we remember that we've gotten this infusion of funds, which has been really important and much-needed, and I think we put it to great use. Over the last four years, the budget, the LPS budget, specifically going LPS, is up $87 million. So, so almost 50%, five zero. And, we have put it to great use, I think. And we've hired lots of folks in special education and English learner education, which have been areas of focus, particularly with the Student Opportunity Act, with social-emotional learning, as well as curriculum, you know, we talked about curriculum materials tonight, technology, and facilities. We've been able to make progress on, on facilities. And, that's very exciting. The, those investments, particularly the hiring, the, the costs, they compound you every year, just automatically. When you have folks, over time, they're, they're moving into different steps, and there's line changes and so on and so forth. Insurance costs are increasing at a higher pace than anything else, including the, our, our revenues, despite good partnerships that we have with, with our, our unions to try to, to keep that in check. And, so, I think you all recognize that even with a, a large increase this year in funding, we sort of start the budget process having to, to cut based on what we would have done otherwise, in, in terms of keeping the, our projected expenses in line with projected revenues. And, I think that this, this, as we're, as we're sort of moving forward, and this isn't specific to this budget process, but like, looking forward, we are likely to, we're hopefully going to get another large increase next year. But unless the governor and the legislature decide to, to alter the, the future course, that is projected to stop after the, the next year. And, just to try to put some numbers on that, the last four years, we've averaged an increase on the, going specifically to the Lynn Public Schools, an increase of about $20 million a year. Before that, we were averaging, for the few years before that, we were averaging about $10 million a year. And so, you know, if, if, if we're, if we know we're going back there, it's, it's just something to, to keep in mind. Now, I know that I will push for the legislature to make some changes to help education funding keep pace with inflation and so on and forth, and so forth. I know that we will be joined by the, the School Committee and, and our legislative delegation, and our, and our partners with the, the, the AFT, NMTA, and folks, that there is, you know, a push to, to get Beacon Hill to reform Chapter 70 and sort of follow up on the Student Opportunity Act. So, I'm not saying that, that we know what's going to happen, and we'll try to, to alter that sort of trajectory. But, but I, I, you know, we just want to flag that. And, and at the end of the day, you know, obviously, where we are in, in the LPS, we have an obligation to, to balance the budget. And, and we need to put projected expenses in line with our projected revenues, and, and we don't have the ability to run a deficit. That's not, that's not an option. So, that, that, that's sort of just some, some table setting. I also think that, I want, I want to point out that I know that passions are running really high about the, the, the budget, and that, that absolutely makes sense. I think it, it's important, and these are important issues. And I think we all should bring our experience and our care and commitment to the issues to these discussions. And, and I think we can, and we will disagree civilly at, at times, and, and that is, that's okay. I would remind us to do our best to assume the best intentions with everybody we're working with. I do think we have a, a great group of folks that are, that are here in this district generally, and, and are, and are working on this. And, you know, we're all trying to figure out what's in the best interest of the, of the district. Sometimes we'll have different conceptions of that, but I think it's helpful to try to assume the best intentions. And, 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 you know, we're going to ask good questions, and important questions, and that's an important part of the process. And, and, and I think we get the best results when everyone brings their, their, their questions, and, and their different perspectives and different opinions to the discussion. And I also think we get the best results when we're, we're asking those questions from a place of, of curiosity, of, of trying to, try to figure out what's going through people's minds, and, and instead of, as opposed to potentially trying to, you know, point fingers or assign blame, or so on and so forth. And, and that, that has absolutely been my experience here, is that, that while we may disagree, that, that is the intention of everyone involved here, that to, to try to do what's in the best interest of our students. And I appreciate, you know, a lot of work goes into preparing these budgets, a lot of work goes into reviewing them. And, you know, as we, as we sort of get further into it, and, and start out the, the course of the next three meetings, which were, which were, this is going to be a big topic, I just wanted to, you know, thank folks for, for their investment and, and their, and their work on the process. So, I will turn it over to Dr. Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just want to start by sharing that when we look at this budget, not only do we look at the district strategic plan, and the vision, and the core values of LPS, but really looking this year at what is equitable budgeting, and switching over to school-based budgeting, where principals do have the autonomy to say there are a number of categories which they should be able to make decisions on, and they have not in the past. That is really the shift in thinking around school resources and school allocations, making them, leveling the playing fields between positions within schools and appropriate popul-, student population support. So, I just want to, I, I want to share that, that the commitment has been evident to ensure that every student in every classroom has the support tools and opportunities needed to succeed. That's been evident through the budgeting process with our principals, with all of our internal departments, as well as in discussions with both of our unions. Our values-driven approach is central to the proposed funding year 2026 budget for Lynn Public Schools. And, we have had meaningful engagement on a number of occasions with all of our stakeholders that have been involved at the district level, and with principals, as well as with teacher voice through our cabinets, in sharing what it is that, that they have, have pointed out have been valuable resources, and those resources that they have felt that have not been used wisely through the, through the years. Since January, the district has worked very, has worked diligently to align resources with top priorities, preparing funding, for funding realities and necessary adjustments. However, although we will share the actual numbers in the presentation that Mr. McHugh will share in the forecast, while we did have an increase in the SOA and the Chapter 70 aid, we received the school department allocation mid-March, and we refined some of those numbers with the city team, looking at indirect costs that impact our school department budget. The reductions were then identified and, and really designed to minimize the impact on students and preserve instructional quality, and a focus on programmatic strategy and equity. And what I want to, in partnership with the School Committee, remind all of us here this evening, is that the School Committee numerous times made statements about how administrators go first when there is a reduction in force, and I have kept the commitment to honor that in some of the, in the decisions that were made. In partnership with the School Committee, we upheld that commitment to prioritize reductions for administrative roles first, protecting classroom capacity. Instructional coaches have been reassigned to teaching roles, which will bolster staffing and instruction at the secondary level only. We have kept those CITs and reading, reading instruction, instructional staff at the elementaries. Department heads will remain in their roles. We have also met with them in a meeting last week. So, with no added financial cost to the actual district budget, by them teaching four classes in, in a commitment to our students. And so, that way, they would continue to maintain academic leadership across our schools as well. Other administrative reductions include non-union and LSAA positions. Those were based on programmatic changes, principal input, and supported by data and strategic alignment. There are a little over half a million dollars in proposed savings in this proposed budget for non-union administrators in addition to any LSAA reductions as well. So, tonight, Mr. McHugh will present our budget goals, cost factors, staffing adjustments, and next steps. So, as we move forward, we're remaining committed to listening with intention, we're going to lead with integrity, and we're going to continue to invest boldly in the future that our students deserve. I know that all of these decisions have not been easy. I know that the teachers and department heads and staff that has been impacted. We have done the best that we can, given the timeline that we had, to make the best decisions possible for our students and for staff. I want to thank Sheila O'Neil for collaborating with us in our meetings internally, as well as Mara Shear, to keep a commitment to our staff and do the, again, the best that we can, given the circumstances, which are not ideal, but preserving all of those teacher and department head units, to continue to, to not experience loss of pay, which was really the most important consideration when we made some of those shifts. So, with that, Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Alvarez. So, the goals that we, she kind of mentioned are basically the implementation of key evidence-based programs. We're using data to focus on what decisions we're making to improve student achievement. We're also using high-quality secondary pathway programs. We have expansion of MYCAP and Chapter 70 programming. So, for example, over at LVTI, the enrollment has increased in a few shops. So, we added a new cosmetology teacher, we add a new graphic arts teacher, and we have that new shop that's construction craft laborers that's starting this year. So, we have funding for those in their budget as well. When you go to their budget page, you'll see some of those. Also, the, this will be- Also, the, this will be the fourth year, the expansion of the Frederick Douglass and this year we'll be moving into the new east, the former Eastern Bank at 195 Market Street. We'll be increasing the seats by 176 students this coming year. And as we heard earlier, the City Arts and Science Academy will be opening up with 300 seats. Will also be the expansion, which has been great pride of this Bennett Street site. As you know, last year we did the first floor and, you know, we'll be doing the second floor, so we'll be expanding again onto the, the early childhood center and that's got another 292 seats that are available at that facility. We also, we also be providing funding for the free and appropriate public education for our special ed students, which we're required to do. Next slide, please. So this slide is really the, the comparison that comes right off of DESI. So this is the sheet that we look at and you can see on the fourth one down is the Chapter 78. So as the mayor said, we have been getting amounts, a good amount of money. So next year, this coming year, we're going to have 317,126,307, which is an increase of $29.5 million. It's, it's important to note, well, there's some good news here, I guess. The good news is the governor, that was the, this is the governor's number, the House and now the Senate has also approved this number. So it's going to the compromise committee, which is good news because that typically means this is the number we'll be going forward. You know, we're, I can still say it could change, but based on past years, this is really what we would be ending up with. So we're, I think we're in pretty good shape at that point. I also want to mention, and as I go through the next couple of slides, even though this is a large amount of money, it's not keeping up with the inflation factor. And that, I'm going to show you how that's hurting us in funding everything we need to fund. And I have some examples in the next couple of slides that'll show that. Next slide, please. So you can see I highlighted here, it's 29.5 million is the increase. And even the city is having increases since they cover the cost. They pay for all the health insurance for all our employees and as well as our retirees and everything else. So you can see that their health insurance projecting is a 10.2% increase and the pensions for a lot of our employees that aren't in the MTRS is a 15% increase. And the inspection services budget for projects and everything else, custodians and maintenance and everything else, they're projecting a 9.7% increase. So that's a $9.5 million off the top that has to come out, which leaves us with $20 million just to allocate to our budget. The big cost is, as I said before, you know, we're with the people business and we're almost 81% people. So when you start looking at our budget, that's where our costs are going. And in putting in the budget, our projected salary increases, step increases, longevity increases, educational increments and lane changes, you can see that that's estimated at next year, I have budgeted at $13.9 million. One note within that number is that's also due to the fact that we had, we were grateful last year when we, that the city got that $1.6 million grant for the early childhood. Well, that grant is not available this year, so we have to roll all those folks into the budget as well. So that's included in the $13.9 million. So right off the top, you can see where a good chunk of our money's going. These are the, some of the cost factors that you can see is the big one is the special education out-of-district costs. They're getting, they were approved for a 13.1% increase next year. That's, it used to be about 3% or so. So this is just to show you the out-of-district schools, what's happening here and it's driving our cost that we will, I have a slide that's coming up next, it's going to give you more detail on that. Curriculum instruction, so most of this is consumables. You heard us talking about consumables tonight. It's a 1.7, but it's important to note that that jump is more likely because last year in May, the city gave us an additional $1 million towards our budget and we utilized those funds to purchase a lot of these consumables last year. So that's why we're seeing this bigger jump in our budget this year. So we were grateful for that, but that helped us last year, but it also now, unfortunately, we have to continue to maintain those expenses. Our transportation budget, we've done a really good thorough review. It's gone up more than this in years past, but we're only projecting a million dollar increase. Stipends are projected to go up by almost 800,000 and employee benefits are up over 800, almost $900,000. Next slide, please. So this slide, I took a moment to go through the special education out-of-district tuitions. And you can see under the heading there, I have a note, the Chapter 70 funds we receive in the funding only funds $6.3 million. And you can see on the right-hand side, I put that the FY '26 budget, I have a total, if you look, the total is 18.7, but the funding in the budget's $12.1 million because we have that, we're grateful for the circuit breaker reimbursement and you can see that's $6.5 million up next year we're going to be utilizing. But out of the $12 million, I'm only getting $6.3 million from the state to cover these costs. So that's giving a deficit of $5.8 million. So when we look at our budgeting, that money has to come from somewhere. We have to do this. These are the expenses and you can see on the left, there's 154 students and this year we're projecting out at $16.5 million. So that's the important factor right off the bat, that we're not getting the adequate funding for this type of services we need to provide to our children, but also then it has to come from other, other money that would be used elsewhere in the budget. So it's, it's important to note that. So I thought I was going to show you that. The next slide, please, is the transportation and this is in the non-salary side. And you can see that the transportation budget has a million increase and the inside district is where really our big expenses are 1.7. And this is because we have a contract that's expiring this June. We, we had a nice three-year contract that was favorable, but based on the experiences, that's going to go up. So that's what we're seeing pretty much. So I highlighted, if you look at the special education, you know, you have inside at 8.5 million, outside 3 million and homeless is another one that continues to grow, it's at $2 million. So those are our large expenses on transportation. But I put this another note here, we, we do not, this doesn't count towards net school spending and we do not receive, the reason it doesn't count is you, the state's supposed to provide reimbursements for this. I've been doing this for over 20 some odd years, they've never given us any money. They don't fund this. So it's almost like an unfunded mandate. So it's like, it's as, it's almost like a double issue that it doesn't count towards our net school spending and they don't give us the money they should be giving us to fund this. So this, it's, it's just tough, but these things we have to put in our budget. We have to pay for these things. So we're doing our best to kind of make sure that we can keep this number as low as possible and, and get it right to it, but it's still overall, it's a million dollar increase for next year. Next slide. So this is the curriculum budget and as I talked about last year, we received a billion dollars to help offset it, but you can see the overall budget's up 1.7 million dollars, but the consumable lines I put down below is 1.6 million. And then I listed some of the larger items that they're going to be expensing, you know, so just on the, on the bottom, you have the math curriculum, science curriculum renewal, social studies renewal, ELA high schools curriculum renewal, math, sorry for the spelling error, high schools curriculum renewal, City Arts and Sciences Academy, the AP expansion and early childhood expansion. So you can see where some of those funds are going. This is just a sampling of them, this isn't a complete list. So that's, gives you some idea where the funds are going on the non-salary side. And the next slide, please. And this is something we've talked about every year, the technology. In the budget, there's only an increase of 601. The items down below are things we have to purchase. We have network supplies, we have student laptops, we're in a four-year rotation, so we have to rotate those. We, this year, we, we have about almost a half million dollars of lost or damaged computers that we're going to have to replace. Staff laptops are on a rotation and there's, that's $314,000. We have to buy new headsets and that's 300 and laptop cases that we provide all the students with the protective cases, so if they do get dropped, it's, hopefully it will save them from breaking. And also we're, with the new Eastern Bank, the infrastructure, we have to, equipment we have to fit, fit in the building's like 600,000. So this comes out to $4.4 million. That's not in the budget and we put a freeze on the budget and we've done this for the last few years and we're going to continue to have to do this at this time, that we need to buy these things and we're going to use any of the savings in our budget this year to purchase these. So we've been kind of squirreling this money away to make this work, so. But it's important to know that this is, again, this, it would be great to have this in our appropriation budget, but if we did that, that means more would have to come out. So we're trying to, you know, balance everything out in a, in a way we can make this work. The next slide is just a sampling of some of the stipends and I, because I mentioned it was up almost $800,000. So, I mean, the top line is one of the largest ones, it's an increase of 194. That's new. We've had a lot of requests from principals, they're looking for additional help after school, whether it's some clerical help or whether it's from some staff to work or attend an open house. So it's always, they never really had any funds, so we put some funds at the elementary schools for like $10,000 a school to have some funds to provide amounts of money that they can utilize when they need to, if they need someone to stay late or cover or do something. So that's some flexible money for them. And that's been a request that we've received over years, they asking for additional funds, so we're doing it this year. Halfway down, there is the, the coach extended learning summer school program, that's $230,000. That's, that's a large program for all the special needs students that need to attend summer school, so that's one of the larger ones. And then down in innovation and grants, you know, it's a hundred thousand dollars, but that's like credit recovery and then we have an Endicott summer program, so that's covering some of those costs there. But those are kind of the larger ones, I just wanted to highlight for you, but just so you'll see. And these are all listed in your budget book under the non-salary, but this is just a quick The next one, just, this isn't a complete list on the stip-, next slide, please. On the budget staffing adjustments, this is just kind of some of the things we've talked about, you know, from the administration. There's, in your book, I think it's right after the red tab, there's a complete list of everything, school by school, location by location, that shows what changed. So it'll help you use as a guide when you look at your budget book, so it'll help you kind of guide through all the ins and outs, but this is kind of like grouping some things together as a sampling of what's going on. And you can see that we are eliminating three non-union administration jobs in this budget. And at the department heads, it was something the superintendent mentioned, we collaborated with the administration union as well as the teachers' union and the department heads will be teaching classes next year. They'll be covering four classes where they weren't covering, so in order to make that balance, we eliminate some of these positions down below because they'll be picking up classes. So this is a list of those items. And then on the next one, we, we have some program specialists that we're adding, but these are our largest schools with over 600 students. So, and we are closing one at Frederick Douglass, but we closed that to open a vice principal at the school, so we're using that as a trade-off because now this Frederick Douglass goes into their fourth year, it's important that they, you know, have that VP at that level to help support them. So we, they closed the program specialists and opened a vice principal. And the clinical supervisors, we had seven that we closed and one out of the seven, one retired and four were hiatus and clinician jobs that we closed as well. So you can see that there's still some that have available to get it. The coaches, a lot of these, I have a list of the coaches, the closing positions, but other coaches, a total of 35. Out of the 35, 13 were frozen last year and two were vacant, so we had 15 of the 35 were never even filled last year. So and the other 20 are eligible to apply for the open positions that we have available. Human Resources told me Tuesday that they have 299 open positions right now. So we have jobs available. And so that's, those were jobs that were filled by people that weren't licensed or on waivers. So we're required to try to post those jobs and get those filled. So there are positions available to be filled in this public school, so people that may have had their job closed have the opportunity to go into other positions in that school department. Next slide, please. So this is kind of the final summary of the budget and you can see at the bottom, it's important, it's almost, it's 80.5% our salaries and 19.5% roughly is non-salaried. That, the non-salaried's growing and I think that's some of the things I showed you that are affecting it because a few years back, we were 82% people. So you can see the non-salaried's affecting us a little bit, that it's now eating into the salary piece. So that, that's just, I wanted to show that because that's a trend that we don't want to keep doing. The next are the pie charts, next slide, please. So this one's the first one, these are in your budget book too, so the salaries. You can see the biggest piece is regular ed and special education is where most of our money is going. And it lists all the other items, central office, English language learners, social, emotional, school administration, food service, nurses, employee benefits, athletics. So, but it just highlights in a visual where our bulk of our funds are, they're in regular education and in special education. Next slide, please. On the non-salary side, you know, the yellow is our special education and it's, the tuitions is 33%, transportation is 20% and our contracted services 2%. 55% of our non-salaried funds are going to our special education. So it's a large number and that's, we're required to do this, we have to do this, so, but it just gives you some perspective of where, where these funds are going on the non-salaried side. And the next slide, please. So salary and non-salaried. So you can see the two, again, the two largest combined is going to be regular education at 45% and special education at 31%. So that's 76% are spent on regular education and special education. So, I mean, that's where, you know, regular ed is spent is, I think, obviously students and that's where the money's going. So I think it shows that we're really putting the money in that, in that spot. So that concludes, the next slide. So as this, as we talked about, any of your questions should be sent to Mary Jewels and she'll get us to, get them to the appropriate people so we get answers. The budget will be, will remain on the budget for questions at the next meeting and we're looking to set the public hearing on the budget for June 12. And after there's any questions, I think we should try to get a motion to get that on because we have to post it for 30 days for the public and go in a newspaper, put it out in the newspaper, so it's, everyone has a chance to come and speak. So if there's any questions, we can answer them at this time.
Just a, just a general point, a lot of people have been asking me like sort of, you know, why such an increase and they see the $29 million number and say like, you know, so how are we in this situation? Deputy O'Shea, if you could just go back to the second slide for a second. This is why I think there's a sentiment out there that, you know, we don't really understand why we're in this situation, so I just hope that my fellow members and everyone here is sort of on the same page and that we can-
This one?
The one-
Next one.
Right there. They're all on the same page and that we can be able to explain this to people when they ask us because I think there is a sentiment out there that, again, somehow, you know, we don't know how we're in this situation or we don't, we can't explain why we're in this situation. And while there's some concerning things there, it, it is what it is and I just wanted to highlight that, sorry, we're watching. Oh, also Kevin?
Yeah.
Remember, Keston?
Kevin, could you just reiterate the SOA increases that we've seen this year? What was the increase percentage? I think it was like 10%?
Uh, I can do it, but it was 29.5 million is the increase. 10.8, thank you.
Okay, and then one more year, we're going to get, right?
Yep. And again, as the mayor said, we, we really don't know because we weren't projecting this, this amount of money this year. And it's, it's, we're happy that we got it and you can see we're still struggling with, to make everything work.
I mean, what, one reason to be hopeful, I think, and this is all just like projection or conjecture or whatever, but the fair share revenue has been very strong and that has to go to education and transportation. And so I think there's a, there's a sort of theory that we're, we're able to continue this momentum for this year, even though the state is having some revenue issues, they were able to fulfill their commitment to the Student Opportunity Act because of the fair share revenue. And that's, that's going to continue, you know? So I think the push will be for, at the expiration of the, of the Student Opportunity Act to say, you know, K through 12 needs to be a part of whatever that fair share future is or whatever, so. to say, you know, K through 12 needs to be a part of whatever that fair share future is or whatever, so.
How much circuit breaker money have we got today, to date?
To date? I mean, since, since when? I mean, how back you want to go? I'd have to look that up.
No, 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 I'm talking about this, since we, this year.
This year, we haven't finished because it's not, the file, the file's not even submitted to July 17th. So, we won't know until probably August. So, this is money we got last year. So, that's why he put 6.5 million. So, we, because we don't even get the funds. And even when we get the funds, the last payment comes, like this year's money that we're gonna project won't even come till, like July will be the last payment. So, it's into next fiscal year. So, we're rolling it. So, I, we use the previous monies, which I know is 6.5 million. So, then this year, well, next year will be larger. And then we just keep getting it. And I mean, Christine Collel has been doing a great job in getting this and going inside and getting students that are in our system, not just out of district students and going after, because there is a threshold of 50 some odd thousand dollars. Anything but, we're utilizing that. And she's been doing a good job at going after those funds.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion to set down the public hearing for June 12.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Any other clarifying questions or anything that folks have? All right, so, please, we'll look forward, the team will look forward to getting the questions, I'm sure. And then this will be on the agenda for the next, for the next meeting. So, thank you, thank you, everybody. Do we have communications?
I just wanted to give a message to the teachers.
Okay. So, let's ask for a.
So moved on the amendment to move communications.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Close.
So, being that it's Teacher Appreciation Week, I just wanted to send a message to all of our teachers, hopefully listening or that most of us will share with them. Not just in the emails that we sent this week saying, "We appreciate you." But really, I, I just wanted to reiterate that we wanted to let all the teachers know that they are the heart of what happens in our schools every single day. It is why students show up. It is why students engage. It is why students are passionate and smiling and/or sharing, right? What they're going through at any given point in time. And I want to make sure that all of our teachers know how much we appreciate them. Not just this week, but each and every day. And we are so proud and grateful for the success that they've contributed to our district over the past two years. And going forward, we know that our students will continue to thrive because they are in our classrooms. So, I just wanted to, to share a message before we go into our meeting. Thank you.
Well, appreciate that and certainly echo our appreciation for our amazing teachers. So, happy appreciation, happy Teacher Appreciation Week to everybody. All right, so we are looking for a motion to request executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Kevin McHugh, School Business Administrator, Jennifer Short, our Executive Director of Data Assessment Accountability.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Oh, got it.
Is there a motion to enter regular session?
Make a motion to enter a regular session.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetle?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Signal for the business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.